Look guilty.
I was just thinking of my favorite song.
I know.
I went to hell.
There we go.
It's a side joke.
It's time. You ready?
We are live. Okay, this is what I call the June second meeting of the Marshall County Commissioners to order. We're gonna start with Pledge of Leagues. Will all please rise?
I would like to raise the key to the wire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, in the bosom with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, Pastor Brandon Ritchie's here to lead some prayer, open the meeting.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you this day thankful for these men who have been tasked to govern their community. And as they so willingly navigate the waters of the issues that lay before them, Father, we pray for wisdom for them. Praying that their decisions not only are God honoring, but beneficial to those whom they serve. It is a high calling, Father, to lead, and we're thankful that you have placed before these men the the ability to do so, the willingness to do so, Father, and we pray for their decisions this day. And we also pray that there's a level of peace and harmony amongst the discussions that are here this day as these decisions are made. We thank you for these opportunities. We thank you for the opportunity to honor you and pray that you are glorified in all that we do. In your son Jesus's precious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brandon.
Before we get started, I'd like to mention to the two commissioners, we have some time conflicts here today. If we get to find, I'd like to reserve the right to adjust the schedule, the agenda items of the deed. Are you okay with that? Okay. Okay, just to let everybody know ahead of time. Okay, then we'll start with the public getting put on agenda items. Anyone here has anything they'd like to address or say about items on the agenda? Please be mindful that we do have a three minute time limit. So anyone has anything to say, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing that, we'll move on. Attorneys report, Sean.
Okay, um, just a couple of things that I wanted to announce that, uh, so the Marshall County Holding Corporation is a separate county entity that actually owns the jail property. We've scheduled their annual meeting that will occur in this room following, at eleven o'clock. We're immediately following the next Commissioner's meeting on June the sixteenth. So, um, just wanted to get that out there that that is on the agenda. And, um, I think at this time, that's all that I have. We have some comments and things on some of the Commissioner items.
Do we have, uh, do they have to look at the tower contract if we do something? Is that maybe part of what they're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll get back on schedule here. Highway Department, Jason. Assistant gentleman with Jason also.
I think part of it.
Okay.
Do you want to do the violytic before or after I'm done?
Uh, go ahead and get started then. We'll bring him up. When you get your report done, you can hang around a minute. Thank you. You got the road cuts, Tori? Thank you. You guys ready? First, we have, uh, road cuts. First for your flock group, he's, uh, the first one is, or excuse me, the only one is Lincoln Highway Pioneer to Windmill Drive, Center Township. It's install a camera on a twelve foot pole on behalf of Plymouth Police Department. I guess they're because they're working our right of way. Motion approved. Second. Second. Motion made, second. Through the flock group, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we move on to NipSCO. Seven B to Ironwood to Hickory Directional Board in Center Township replace, uh, I guess, regulation station due to leak. The second one for NipSCO is Michigan Road Dewey Street to Eighteenth, while the township, they're gonna back a hole for a pole, install, I'm not sure, S C A D A emergency monitoring equipment. Third project is four A, Lilac to King. Same, they're gonna back a hole for a pole in North Township, same emergency monitoring equipment. Number four is the same, uh, Fourteenth, Peach to Olive in West Township, against install monitoring equipment. Number five is Seventh, Hickory to Gumwood, Center Township. It's the same, do install monitoring equipment. Number six project is Sixteenth, excuse me, Redwood Sixteenth to Fifteen B in West Township. Same, they're gonna back a hole for a pole and install emergency monitoring equipment. Seventh is Ninth, U S Thirty to King Road, same, uh, Center Township, install emergency monitoring equipment. And that's it for them. Seven projects.
Make sure to approve the, uh, NipSCO request as presented.
Second, made, the second approved, the seven NipSCO requests as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next is B S M Group. They got one project, Seventh, Pear to Pine, North Township. It's a directional bore, uh, is the replace conduit placement and install fiber optic cable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the B S M Group project, Seventh, Pear to Pine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Bridge two thirty-two Randolph Street, uh, the poor construction plans to strip the framework from the caps on the piers and drive pylons for Pier Three. Bridge two thirty-one, end dot ascending limitations for response to stakeholders regarding the reevaluation of non-select versus select status of the bridge. Uh, the response will be complied to, uh, evaluation, review, and approved by the State Historic Preservation Office. Geotech drone occurred on May, um, and the geotech evaluation report will be, is being prepared. As a reminder, just because of the historic process, the project has been pushed out to physical year twenty-eight, and the new wedding date for that will be August of twenty twenty-seven. Bridge eighty-eight, Twelfth Road, uh, geotech investigation was completed last week. Bridge one oh eight East Seventh, uh, plans have been submitted end dot for review. For bridge, uh, for the, for the bridge inspections, twenty-six through twenty-nine, in process of putting together the fee and contract documentation. No pond dam improvements, we'll be contacting the company to schedule the slip lining for the pipe. E V grants, uh, charging stations have been installed, electric should be ran this week, uh, for the charging stations. And hopefully, we can be done with the E V project. Road work reclaiming process for road program has been completed. We'll be addressing roads completed to prep for finding service. Chip and seal, last week, we did finish jar, twelve B to Fourteenth. Today, they'll be working on Third, King to Lilac, Lilac three A to four A. Received an email on May thirtieth from Milestone. They're possibly looking at starting in about three weeks due to some of the rain delays that they've had too. It's kind of pushed things back a little bit, which, uh, kind of understand how that goes. Toner patcher last week, May twenty-eighth, um, toner patcher was brought out to the highway to do a demo. They did a walk around over the unit, uh, did a live demo of the machine patching. As promoted, the ability to patch potholes in rain or in water was truly tested. It was pouring rain and spots were full of water when demo was done. One of the things I looked into, uh, cube cap, we do pay the loader and mower off this year, which that payment is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven eighty-five ninety-one. So after this year, that money would be freed up from those payments that we had this year for the, um, mower and loader. So I put that out there as an option. Mowing contract, we had a gentleman come in and is looking for some work to do mowing.
Um, I did send this to Sean for him to review.
It lists the roads on there that we currently do. That's something that he would be taking over, which we have a part-time personnel that is doing that, which would be more beneficial to us being able to help on the road advice, opposed to being in the mower and stuff. I thought the price he gave was a very fair price. Based upon what we have right now for the current mowing contract, I'm pretty sure we can about just finish that money out with what we have appropriated in that and pay him from that as well without having to do any additionals.
He's doing this over and above the general.
Sean Bontrager.
Over and above the other contract, correct? Because this is roads we didn't set.
This will be a completely different contract.
Yeah. That's the way he took it, but I wanted to make sure.
I think it just goes by his individual names. Yep.
So we're looking for a motion to?
Yes.
Okay. It said Sean Bontrager?
Sean is the, it's either Sean or Amos.
Okay.
I'm, I'm saying Amos Con, it's the name of him, Amos Bontrager. Sorry.
Okay.
Let's real, real quick. Uh, hey Jason, is this some company here in Marshall County or what, where are they out of?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
All right, well, I move to approve the, uh, mowing agreement between the county and, uh, Amos Bontrager as presented.
Second.
Motion made, made and seconded to approve the additional mowing contract as presented by Amos Bontrager. All in favor, say aye.
Before you go there, it's got for the Marshall County Highway to sign. Can you amend your motion if you're giving authority to the highway to sign this?
I amend the motion to, uh, allow the highway superintendent to sign on behalf of county.
Second.
The motion would be to approve the agreement with, uh, uh, Amos Bontrager for the additional mowing with the highway department, having authority to sign on behalf of Marshall County Commissioners. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for touching that.
Jason, do you have the liability insurance?
Yes, I have all that.
Okay, if you can get a copy of all of that, a fully executed copy to me, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Anything else for Jason?
I will just say, uh, thank you for letting us know about that, uh, demo on the, uh, DuraPatch unit that was very impressive and, uh, yeah, to those, we had some pretty decent sized potholes out there and they were absolutely full of water. And to watch that mix just displace that water and fill those holes up and, and still remain, you know, durable. It, it certainly will, uh, increase the time when we're able to do that kind of work, because the weather obviously isn't gonna stop it, so.
No, and that's one of the huge benefits to that machine is it's year-round. Even after he did his demo of it and went through the walkthrough, that's what makes him the sole proprietor for that is they can actually patch it. Subdue whether do you do how it actually heats up and works. But literally, we all seen it. When he talked about being able to patch in water, those, those holes were clear full of water. Not to mention it was pouring rain.
Yep.
And then they're still there today.
Yep.
I, I agree a hundred percent with what.
And that machine also has a, uh, crack sealer on it as well, so it will, uh,
No type purpose.
If you're going down the road and you see cracks that need sealed, you're gonna be able to both fill potholes and seal cracks at the same time, right?
And the other option you had on that was you don't have to do solely one or the other. It can be switched over right on site to be able to do it too. So, I mean, literally, you're kicking two to three birds with one stone.
It was impressive, that's for sure. So, uh, I guess there's something to talk about.
Yeah.
He's got these, uh, cube cap expenses retiring. So that's something to look at down the road. I do think though, if we go that way, of course, I've wanted to do it for a couple of years. That machine is a lot more efficient, you know, when we got ten years old, because it's, it's got all the updated technology where our old one doesn't, so you got no spill. I gotta, I gotta be honest, I questioned forty percent savings in material. After seeing it, talking to him, I understand now where he's coming up with that number. And he's probably right.
He is.
He's probably right, so, um, okay.
Any update on our auction on the, on the zipper?
We did not.
Okay.
They bought almost the exact same money the same time.
Okay.
So, I'm kind of open for suggestions on it. One thing I did think about was calling another company themselves and asking them if they are interested in it.
Call who?
The actual asphalt zipper company.
Oh, okay.
They may be looking for a buyback.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that is an option, I think.
Good.
Check it out.
All right.
I'll keep looking.
Okay. Well, hang on a second. This, I'm, uh, Slater Rush, did I pronounce that right? With Violytics? Could you come on up, please? And have a seat and please state your name and title of the company you're with.
Absolutely.
Sound good? And speak in, speak in your microphone so we get you on recording.
Perfect. Awesome. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, yeah, Slater Rush, um, with Violytics, um, and I have a few documents I'll pass out to you as well.
Okay.
All right.
It'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I can get one for you, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, awesome.
Uh, as long as it hasn't changed, I've seen it.
Perfect. Awesome. Um, so yeah, I'm not, not sure if this is the best way to, to present everything to you in terms of showing you the actual system, but in general, to, to give you, uh, I guess, a high level overview of everything, um, just in terms of Violytics, kind of what we are, how counties are utilizing us. So we're a fully automated A I road management system, so, um, many of you may be familiar in terms of kind of how the process is to date. Most counties are completely manually driving every single one of their roads to conduct PESA ratings. Or the other option really is to contract it out to a consulting firm or an engineering firm. And, you know, typically, they're also manually driving every single road. So, A, it's just extremely time-consuming, uh, very labor-intensive to go out. You're constantly having to, you know, run one particular segment, stop at the end of that segment, manually writing down the PESA rating. Uh, there's also a lot of variability with that. You know, if I go out, rate the county's roads today, uh, and one of you go out the next day and rate them, there's a high probability we're gonna come up with completely different scores, uh, in terms of that. So, um, Violytics has developed a system that's done completely on smartphones, mounted on municipal vehicles. So you can mount them on any D P W truck, any type of vehicle, uh, while you're driving. It's taking still photos every ten, twelve feet and automatically assessing all of the roads. So you're able to conduct the PESA ratings, uh, at a much quicker rate, uh, than what you would normally be able to do manually. Uh, and it's also a, and consistent, uh, trained, developed, uh, A I algorithm that's automatically identifying all of the surface level pavement distresses just while you're driving. So you just mount the phone, drive, anybody could utilize it. You know, we've had quite a few, even have an intern go out, do it for them, uh, much cost-effective way, uh, in terms of that. And it's gonna automatically identify not only your pavement distresses, uh, and conduct all your PESA ratings for you, but it's also identifying all of your street signs along with the conditions of the street signs as well. So whether those signs are faded, if they're dirty, graffiti, if they're hidden behind any sort of shrub or trees that could be a safety concern. All of that then displays into a really easy-to-use web system where, you know, J C could, you know, hop into it, uh, really from any laptop, monitor, computer, um, we can set up really anybody within the county with access to it, depending on preferences there. Uh, and we can, you know, change different user roles and rights, uh, in terms of visibility into that. But really, from there, you can filter all that data down in terms of conducting all your planning. Uh, we have a lot of budgeting tools in there as well, where you can do all of your planning, uh, budgeting in there, uh, so we can get estimates in there. Really develop out, you know, whether you wanted to develop just next year's paving list or even building out a five-year plan, so you can kind of prepare, uh, for all of that. Uh, and then we also have fully integrated work order management built into that. I would say that's probably one of our most, uh, heavy utilized features in terms of across all the counties that are utilizing us. Uh, just for reference, White County is one that, uh, has been heavily involved in, in utilizing not only the system frequently, but also the day-to-day work order management. So creating work orders while you're out in the field, uh, you know, I think you brought up some examples of, you know, some potholes being filled with water. You know, our system will, A, just automatically identify all of that stuff immediately, where you can filter in the system, show me every single pothole within the county, and then we could just create work orders for all of those and assign them out to the crew members. Uh, and they'll get notifications, A, in the app, via email, text, whichever preferences, uh, are set up in there. So not only is it just gonna document everything property, uh, properly, um, especially from a liability standpoint, a legality standpoint, you know, having everything in the web system where you can refer back to, um, and have that proper documentation, but you'll be able to specifically run reports in the system if you wanted to see, you know, how many potholes did we fill this year? How many signs did we do specific work to this year? You know, we'll be able to specifically run all those reports and identify all that. And I think the other big use case in terms of really where counties are seeing a lot of benefit from it is the ability to run the system frequently. You know, whenever you're doing your PESA ratings, typically, you're doing one rating every other year, you know? And that data's great, right? It meets the requirement at least to check off and, and get your community crossings funding, but it's not necessarily helping a ton from an efficiency standpoint, really planning and identifying issues as they're starting to happen. Whereas running a system frequently like Violytics, where you can have them mounted on multiple trucks just while you're going to job sites, we're able to identify issues as they're starting to happen, rather than, you know, once it's already past the point of, you know, conducting preventative maintenance. So over the long term, you'll see a lot of cost savings in terms of identifying areas where you can, uh, do more preventive maintenance, uh, in that standpoint, but also just running specific stretches of road, maybe where, for example, maybe there's bridge closure reroutes. They're rerouting traffic down specific county roads. That's an area where White County is utilizing it right now. They have a ton of, uh, end dot bridge closures currently and they're rerouting traffic down their county roads, uh, which obviously is gonna deteriorate those, you know, much quicker. So they're able to utilize the system specifically to run those stretches of road on a two-week or monthly basis, so we can track the deterioration of that and then be able to get money back for the, the repairs that are needed for that. So that's really where, you know, the system can kind of come into play to, to help with that. I think, you know, in terms of Violytics, we have about, I wanna say about twenty counties currently in Indiana utilizing us. A number of, uh, cities and towns also, um, utilizing it. Quite a few used us for their community crossings grants, uh, applications last year as well. So that's kind of a, a high-level overview of the, the system. We can also keep track of any other assets, uh, in there. For example, Knox County down south has, uh, literally all of their culverts, bridges inventoried in our system, along with the properties, conditions of those, pictures, uh, they can create work orders and keep track of any work that's been done to those assets over time as well. Um, I think a number of other counties now have a lot of their bridges and culverts in there. I know, uh, Wabash County does as well. So we can keep track of really any particular work or data that's ever been done to any of the assets that are, uh, owned and operated, uh, within the county as well. Very quick overview there. Yeah, it's a lot of information.
So could you, can you touch on the costs here and, and kind of, we got a breakdown here. What does all this mean?
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the cost, uh, it's specifically a subscription model. So it's a one-time annual fee. Um, you're essentially paying Violytics that one-time annual fee. I think it's like forty-nine thousand or just a little over that. And then it's unlimited usage from there. So you get to utilize Violytics on an ongoing basis continuously. In terms of terms, we typically do a three-year contract. We can adjust that. Um, we're not necessarily picky on that. So we're pretty, pretty flexible in, in those regards, but I'd say I think pretty much every county's on a three-year term currently with us, um, in terms of that. But that gets you full access to the system. We waived onboarding and training costs just because we're local here in Indiana. So you'll have your own dedicated client success manager who will come on site, do all the training, development in terms of that, helping you build it out how you need in terms of, you know, assets you want in the system, things like that. We can get any assets in the system you already have inventoried as well. So we can work hand-in-hand with your guys' G I S system as well. So all of our data can be taken out, put into your own G I S system. The county would own the data. So even after, you know, let's say you got three years down the road from now and you're like, you know, we don't wanna continue with Violytics, you could take all the data out of our system and, and you still keep it and put it into your own system. Um, so it's kind of.
Tell me a little bit about the training. So obviously, there's upfront training for the operators of the system to make sure that the data that's coming in is good. How about, uh, like backend training? So working with our, our guys to make sure that they can get the most value out of the data that we're collecting?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent. We'll continue to come on site on an ongoing basis. So after we kind of do the initial onboarding and training setup, uh, get everybody comfortable with actually going out, collecting the data. You know, it's kind of really the first piece of it. We need to get some data in there so we can actually really start to utilize it efficiently. And then we'll set up continuous trainings, uh, and check-ins, uh, in terms of being able to really maximize, uh, the data and make it efficient. So identifying areas where, you know, we can make quick improvements into the overall rating, uh, of your road network. That's kind of the nice part about the system is, you know, instead of just having a basic PESA rating and saying, you know, this road's a three, well, you know, we can really pinpoint why is it a three? Maybe there's just one small section of that road that is, you know, starting to have alligator cracking that's causing the overall rating to be a three, but maybe the rest of that road is in pretty good condition and we can do a small repair to that one small section. So, you know, there's a lot of areas where we can pinpoint that stuff within our system, where we can, you know, maximize, A, our budgets, but also the, the, the system in its entirety. So, you know, for example, I think, you know, Taylor, uh, who's our Director of Client Success, uh, for Indiana, he would be your main, uh, point of contact for continuous training, but he'll, he'll always come on site, uh, on an as-needed basis. He's done it, you know, I think he's been in person recently with White County a lot, you know, meeting, onboarding more of their team members and, and getting them comfortable with the system. So, yeah, we'll make sure of that.
Instead of just displaying where we have a problem on a very low level, like, uh, a basic PESA rating would do, this system is actually gonna help us identify more quickly the solutions that we need to employ in certain specific locations in order to resolve the issue.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can filter and drill all that data down specifically for what you're wanting to look for. Same thing with any of your assets, you know, if we wanted to drill down all of our, you know, signs that have, you know, immediate problems that need to be addressed, we could literally filter all that down and, and find those really quickly.
And real quick, so with that information, it's like you said, it over, you can overlay it with G I S, to where we can actually do filters on G I S and?
Yeah, we can import it in there via shapefile, or better yet, we can even, we have an A P I that works with most G I S systems. It should work with yours. We've done it already for a few. Uh, we can set up web feature service and then anytime they're out collecting data, it'll actually automatically update in your G I S system.
So we could create layers that shows where potholes are, PESA rating on, PESA ratings on roads.
Yeah, well, you could do that in our system. Yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, if you wanted it in your G I S system to do that, you could do that.
Well, I'm looking at it from a transparency point of view.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So anytime people are curious what's going on in real time, they'd be able to hop on G I S, click the filter and be like, okay. There it is. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, uh, once we pay in the licensing fee and stuff like that, we can pretty much download that, that as an app to any device we want, or are we limited on the amount of devices?
Um, yeah, so we'll provide you so many devices in terms of the data collection side of it. So we'll provide the phones for going out, doing the data collection. In terms of being able to get into the web system where you'll be able to view and access all that data, it would just be a simple username and, and login, and then you can, uh, access that via any, um, it's, it's a web feature, a web service.
So essentially, if somebody's working on a road and they fill a pothole or they, they can log in, start a work order, that uploads, and when they get done with that, they can go ahead and check off complete as they're going down.
Yep. Yep. They can do it while they're out in the field. It's just a simple app. You can download on any Android or iPhone for your work order management. It's called the Violytics To Do App. Um, you can check it out on the App Store and, um, you can have that on any phone. So you just have to have your own username and login. Um, we're not, we don't charge by the user, so we'll give you unlimited users in terms of that. And we can even associate cost if you wanted to keep track of like labor hours associated with that work order, um, materials, equipment, things like that.
Here, so are you saying that you might help us be able to separate costs for community crossing projects? So we might be able to do in-house paving with community crossing dollars?
Uh, in terms of, because I've, I've heard what the issue about why we can't do in-house paving with community crossings money is because it's so difficult to separate the costs and to provide the documentation. And it's a lot easier to do that when you outsource the work. That's a topic that I would like to talk about because that could dramatically increase our effectiveness.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, when we're doing all of our planned segments and work orders in there. Yeah, potentially. I mean, when we're doing all of our planned segments and work orders in there, we, I mean, we can break it out in terms of cost, materials, things like that um that are in there. So.
Excellent. Yeah.
So I'm back to the forty nine thousand. Is that, excuse me, for three years, three payments?
For a year, yep.
What after that? What costs are there after that?
None.
None?
None, yes.
So you still have the technical support and everything after that going forward?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
I would think this, and I was, this is a question we're gonna have to dig into a little bit more. If this could allow us to do in-house community crossings projects, it would more than pay for itself.
There's a lot of aspects that this could more than pay for. It's like, once we get dialed in on what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um oh, but I would disagree with slightly. I think there's more to it than the community crossings. There's other people that don't want us to do it in-house.
Well.
So. There's more to it just that.
Yeah. Have you guys by chance been working with LTAP to try to get your guys' system or systems like this? For future use as the standard for doing PESA ratings in the state?
Well, I mean, we're, we can't, we've worked with LTAP, yes. I mean, they know uh about Biolitics. They know a lot of the communities that are utilizing us. Uh in terms of that, we've been very collaborative. I presented at, you know, the LTAM conference last year. Um they actually had Matt from Knox County present at the recent LTAM conference. So yeah, we've definitely worked with them. Uh they're aware of systems that are out there. Um you know, I think in terms of LTAP, because they're more for research uh and, you know, purposes and stuff like that. They're not gonna necessarily promote any one standard uh in terms of that. Um you know, but um yeah, I mean, we've worked with them. Um just more on a collaborative side of things, you know, what can we add into our system more for us to just continue to get feedback? What can we add in that's beneficial to all counties, things like that? Um in terms of the new certification and in terms of legislation, we do not need to be certified uh as a company in terms of Biolitics. But you'll still have to have somebody that is PESA certified, you know, go out and check the ten segments uh to meet the new requirements for next year. But you're not gonna have to have necessarily somebody that's PESA certified, running the Biolitic system, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I was hoping that maybe in the future, some of these increased training requirements and the quality control check, which would take basically Jason away from our county to go do something else for another county. And I would think this would be a better option for a quality check versus sending me and basically using manpower to do it.
Yeah, the nice part is like it too in the system, you know, you're gonna have all the image data in there. So you wouldn't necessarily have to be sending somebody out on boots on the ground onto the road. You can pull up any segment. It's kind of your own updated Google Street View as well. So that's the other thing I, you know, didn't mention. You're gonna always, as you're driving, you're gonna still also have all those images in there as well. So you can refer, you know, back, you know, let's say you're using Biolitics five years down the road and you wanted to go back to your very first inspection you did and see what a road looked like on this date compared to what it does now. You're gonna have all that image data in that that login as well.
So it'd be very easy for us to show before and after stuff. So if we, if we run the rating before we do a project and then we run it again after it's done, we got side by side before and after.
Absolutely. And and just to hold your contractors, you know, accountable too, you know, make sure they're doing, you know, you know, quality work in terms of paving. Um you know, being able to run it after, have all the image data, you know, maybe if something is already starting to see defects within a a certain time period. You know, it's it's something you'll easo- easily be able to identify in the system. Yeah, absolutely.
Jason, Jason, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking at this as a, you know, for a a part-time supervisor who is responsible to make sure that our nine hundred and eleven mile road network, you know, that would, if if we went out there to drive that, the the inefficiency of looking at all that. And so we're gonna get real time notifications about identified problems and when they're, when they're fixed. So I'm not having to blow up Jason's phone saying, hey, did that get taken care of yet? We can just pull that up on our, yeah, I love it.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. And same thing too, like if, you know, a a citizen saw something or a pothole that was out there. Um you know, and reported it to to Jason or the highway department, the nice thing is you can pull up the system, type in the address, go to exactly that spot and just create the work order right there in the in the system. So a lot more um efficiency in terms of that and and getting to it quicker too.
Now roughly, how much, how long does it take to usually collect the first amount of data to where we get, get good numbers to where we can start populating the software?
I mean, I think that's kind of really at the discretion of the the highway department and and manpower. I think, you know, to give you an example, when we first onboarded, you know, like Huntington County, for example. I think, you know, originally it was taking them about two to three months just with their large road network to to do a full assessment of the roads. And they got it down into about two, two and a half weeks, three weeks. Um just depending on how, you know, it really depends on how quickly you want to get the data. You know, you could put three phones out there on multiple trucks at once in different parts of the county and be gathering that data simultaneously. So it doesn't have to be done on just one phone at one time. You could have multiple phones running at once and getting that data extremely quick. Um so it it just depends, you know, kind of on on bandwidth and and easily, but I mean, in terms of the time that we get them onboarded, it's just simply mounting the 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 phone and and driving. So.
And how long does it usually take? Av- average county, how long does it usually take to provide the initial training?
Uh from the time we get a contract signed, we'll be able to get you onboarded within two weeks. We just order the hardware and then we'll we'll schedule it and come on site. All right.
Keep our ideas.
So I I don't take this as a question about whether we should do this or not. The question in my mind is, do we ask for an additional appropriation for this year or do we just put it in the budget for next year?
And I was kinda wrestling with that too, cause um timeline, timeline, I was thinking, do it next year. Start, that way we can do the initial training, start in January, doesn't interfere with what we're doing right now, roadwork wise.
And you could put it in your budget for next year.
And we can put it in the budget for next year. But now I'm somewhat thinking it almost. I I would say we have to look at the numbers. I'd almost like to say that I'd like to start collecting data October, November before we start getting snow. And then we could do the training, initial training on this during the winter time to where it won't take away from anything else we might be doing roadwork wise.
If if we could get this approved in our budget this fall, um and and it's in the budget for for January, could we get started in November and then you bill us in January?
Yeah, wouldn't, yeah, I don't think it'd be an issue.
Okay.
Do you guys have a submit, do you have a submittal this year for community crossings or is a major or?
We've already awarded it. It's in the process right now.
Okay.
Are you talking about for for next year's?
Yeah, I was talking about, do you have to submit a major for by December first or is it a minor this year?
Uh. I guess I'm confused what you're asking.
In terms of you're submitting your ratings to LTAP for your asset management line?
Well, we could actually skip here. We never have, though. We've always done the exact same year. So we've never ran the two year. We've always done it every year.
Every, that's okay, good.
We can, we can pay annually, right? Or is it not the full shot?
You pay, no, it's annual.
Cause we're, we're only looking at what?
Forty, forty nine. Almost just under fifty thousand. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't we just think about it? We'll discuss it with Jason next meeting. Jason kinda let us know by next meeting how this is gonna impact you and the benefit. You know, what you see is the, as 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 a big benefit to the highway department.
Yeah.
What we discussed today.
If our council has questions on this, would you be willing to come and present to the council as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Yeah.
Did I have three phones?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have the option to purchase them?
Yes.
And they're still, everything would work fine?
Yep.
Is is there any particular uh cell company that you guys go through for your phone purchases?
Uh we go through Verizon. We have a pretty good contract with them, so we get them at cost, um which is what we pass on. Um and then in terms of cell network though, the nice part about the system is you don't have to have any sort of cell service to run it and collect the data. You just have to have the GPS signal.
Now, is there a potential to add more than just the three phones for data collection?
Yep, yep, you can always add more.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you very much for your presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, we got the uh officers report.
I have your May nineteenth minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May nineteenth meeting as presented.
Second. Motion made second to approve the May nineteenth minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have uh AP claims.
Move to approve the AP claims.
Second.
Motion made second for the AP AP claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And a half payroll.
Motion approve the payroll claims as presented.
Second. Motion made second, prove the payroll claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Part of the meeting I discussed earlier, based on time constraints, we're gonna skip down to a couple items in the commissioner items and then we'll come back to public comments. So be patient. Matter of fact, some of your questions might be answered or you may have different comments when we're done. So Sean, we wanna go to the jail communications tower agreement first?
Yeah, so we've been talking about this for several months. John Boyer had uh made contact with some folks having to do with the uh current communications tower that's out at the jail. And uh uh there's a proposal uh to uh sell a a perpetual easement for that area that the the tower is on and assign the existing lease to a different company. Um and um as part of that, we've um, borrowers have present, prepared some documents. Uh I've reviewed those. We've gone through some round of negotiation over terms and made some edits. Um essentially, it would be a uh purchase price of two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars that the county would receive uh for uh this easement and lease assignment. And um I think we've talked with uh with John and about potentially using those funds for some other upgrades to communications around the county. Um so I think we have the documents in a place that uh I'm comfortable with and recommend to you for approval. Um uh assuming we get your approval, uh this is on the agenda for the Marshall County Holding Corporation for their meeting next uh on the sixteenth uh for their approval since they actually uh own the real estate. Um so happy to answer any questions, but we'd just be looking for your approval uh of the documents.
So this is a motion to send the agreement to the Marshall County Holding Corporation and then they would approve it and sign it?
It it, I think it requires your signature as well, but it's.
It requires president, uh it's only got room for one signature.
Yeah, just for Stan. But um I think if you could give it your approval and Stan's approval to sign it, I think we can get it signed by him. We're gonna get it signed by the Holding Corporation. Uh if it gets their approval after the meeting, just because they only get together at least once a year or as needed. But I think uh Stan's signature could wait till uh closer to whenever we'd set the closing date for uh the buyer to sign. But if we could get your approval of the documents and authorizing Stan to sign.
And just so you guys are aware, uh John and I did, John, you wanna come on up here a second, please, just in case we have any questions? State your name and title, please.
John Boyer, um Epics Coordinator.
John and I had a conversation uh with several people from the, from the company here. Uh obviously, if you run out the full term of the contract, it's more money than the two seventy eight.
Mm-hmm.
But they're also talking about going to uh uh.
Satellite.
Satellite. And if they do that, they can, they can cut us off at any minute without a dime.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously I had a little concern is why are you doing this? Are you buying us out if you can cut us off? And I know on the phone call, a couple of, especially the one lady was concerned for her job because if they do this, she's gonna be on the job. So. I don't wanna say it made me feel better, but I'm trying to figure out where they were coming from.
Sure.
With all this, but uh the two seventy eight will help us do, where will that money go? Will it go back?
You're doing the.
We're going to Epics Fund?
I believe going to Epics Fund and um we can use that to um hopefully enhance the communication deficit that we've been able to identify in the county.
So going forward, would the council have to approve any contracts if we spend that money out of that Epics Fund?
Um I wouldn't think so. I think we would just do a an additional appropriation and then of course um.
So I mean, they would have to do appropriation, correct?
I'm sorry?
They would have to do the appropriation, correct?
Yes.
So they would have a say in this. Okay. Anybody got any questions?
I'm, I'm good with it. Sounds good to me.
So you got anything else you wanna say, John, before we?
No, I I think um in order of looking forward, um we've identified some issues in the communication deficit. And I think uh at a given point in time, this is going to enhance that. So I I think, uh you know, it's all about responder safety. Well, I move that we approve the uh agreement as presented between Marshall County, the Marshall County Holding Corporation and AIO Operating Two LLC.
Second.
Yeah, with with the with the president signing on behalf of the board. Second that.
Motion made to approve the agreement between Marshall County, Marshall County Holding Corporation and AIO Operating Two LLC, which would be for the amount of two hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, correct Sean?
Yes.
Coming back to the county to be deposited in Epics Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
And the next item we had was the uh um discussion in the Marshall County Regional Sewer District. Well, Sean, we'd asked you last meeting to come up with some ideas, some where we're at legally on this.
Yeah, so I think there were, I, the the discussion was started about inquiry whether a board member could be removed by uh the commissioners as the appointing authority. Um and so I've looked into that and then looked into more broadly um things that uh the commissioners could do to um address the the sewer district and uh have have a couple of things to offer. So first is around the question of removing a board member. Um the commissioners were the petitioners to IDIM to reform this uh sewer district. And uh by doing that, um essentially created the, drafted the language that established how the board would be appointed and uh how vacancies could be filled. And um the, that, that language that you used um talks about filling vacancies uh for for any reason, which is language that quotes of uh consistently interpreted to be for a appointment at the government position that's at will or at the pleasure of the the officers that appointed the member. Um versus a uh appointee that serves um for a term that can only be removed for a cause, showing a good cause. Or other type of appointment is one where uh a state statute dictates certain uh terms of removal. And so we don't have that here. Um there's two, two different types of sewer boards that can be created under the Indiana statutes. One, um it, so you could have proposed in your petition to have the board uh be an elected board. Um uh or you could propose to have it be an appointed board. If it were an elected board, the state statutes um specifically dictate how vacancies are filled. And uh those are filed following certain procedures under the Title III, which is the Indiana code title that addresses election law. And the commissioner of IDIM would have a role in um in making those uh replacements when a vacancy occurs. Um you chose to go the appointee, appointed board route. And so uh there's no parameters on uh you know, how you could set that up. And uh you chose to have the uh for any cause uh vacancy uh provision, which was then heard by the IDIM hearing officer. And she recommended your petition and including the vacancy provisions to the IDIM commissioner, who then it would be over that approved your petition. So um the the gist of my legal research on all of that is that as the board sits today, based upon the language in the petition, uh that you do have the authority to uh make at will uh removal of any of your appointees. Um what I've proposed to do, just to be abundantly clear, um in that is um I drafted uh it's ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen. Um and what it does, it has a lengthy preface that sets out all the statutory authority and it goes through some detail in the petition you filed, the findings that were made by the hearing officer and the order that IDIM approved all of that. And then uh sets out the law on at will uh removal and also uh gets into the Home Rule Act, which the Home Rule Act is um state statute that was passed in the nineteen eighties thereabouts that really kinda changed the the face of local government for uh years. that really kinda changed the, the face of local government for uh, years past. Before the Home Rule Act, it was um, the, the background rule was that a local government entity doesn't have any powers that the state didn't specifically grant to it. And so if this, if there's not a state statute or the constitution doesn't say that the county can do something before that Home Rule Act, you couldn't do it, but the Home Rule Act turned that on its head and said unless the state constitution or a statute says you can't do it, the presumption is that any local government unit like the county uh, can use their own local power to uh, dictate how they're gonna handle their business. So basically, um, and the way that you, a county uses its own power is by passing an ordinance, so. Um, what this does and this the ordinance that I'm, I've drafted, um, the first section basically just makes clear that, hey, we wrote the petition that formed this district. We used language that indicated that the board members served at our pleasure, um, and that's the way it is, we're reaffirming that, um, just to be clear, and then the second section says, um, to even further be clear in that, uh, we're proposing to adopt this ordinance, exercising our home rule power because no, none of the statutes uh, that govern uh, sewer districts would prohibit this to occur, it's not interfering with any of the business of the sewer district, it's only uh, addressing how you can um, remove individual members, you're exercising your home rule power to to declare that, so um, that's um, that's what the ordinance that I've, I put forward for your consideration, um, is and I'm also in talking with you, uh, have uh, with regard specifically to Mr. McFadden who is the board member that there was requests about potential removal, um, have a proposed letter that would uh, um, advise him that you're considering this, you've heard these concerns, you're considering this ordinance and inviting him to uh, reach out to come to your next meeting, or if he couldn't make that, schedule a, a future meeting, that he would be available to pen talk with you and have a discussion about the district, um, and um, and advising that this ordinance is up for consideration, so I can, before I'll, I'll, I'll get everything out and then I'll pause and answer questions. The other thing that I uh, researched was that uh, aside from, from the issues with uh, board member replacement, um, there is a process also to uh, ask IDAM to rehear the, the order establishing the districts and um, as the petitioner that requested IDAM to create the district, um, the county commissioners were parties of that administrative proceeding and there's uh, state statutes part of the Administrative Orders and Procedures Act. Um, entitled for the code that uh, talks about that a, a party to the original proceeding can uh, petition to IDAM to ha- ask them to rehear, uh, reconsider their, their final order that they've already entered. Uh, I will say that uh, you know, this is uh, it's probably a difficult process, I would say it's, you know, maybe not like you're doing that route that you're going to um, maybe, you know, convince them to change their mind, but it, it is a process, it's available to you. Um, in, in asking them to do that, uh, you have to show newly discovered material evidence exist and the evidence could not, by due diligence, have been discovered and produced at the hearing in the proceeding, so the original proceeding that formed it, any evidence you'd be um, showing would have to be something that wasn't available, and I know we've received a lot of concerns from folks in the, the first project area um, about the concerns they have about the economic feasibility, the hardship that, that would put on them and and I certainly appreciate all of that, I would say that the vast majority of that evidence that I've heard is stuff that probably could have already brought up in the first hearing if you would have known about it or been prepared with that. Um, so I, I would, I think that sorting through the evidence, if, if you chose to make this petition is gonna, you know, take some effort, now I would say though that um, the the landscape and the economy of today, uh, compared to what it was like in uh, twenty twenty-two is quite different. At those local, state, national level, from everything from the, you know, record inflation we've had and um, property tax spikes and the new, that's the impact of the new property tax reforms are gonna be and tariffs and, you know, prices of everything, so I think there's new evidence that and, and things like that that could be corrected and, and put together in a package that uh, uh, made sense of why the new economic realities uh, might not make this make sense. So I, and if, if you can present such a case, um, IDAM, um, under the sewer uh, district statutes, it's uh, if they determine that a project or operation of the district is not economically feasible, fair, reasonable, the agency may declare the district dissolved, surrender an order for the distribution of all assets owned by the district after the payment of liabilities, so. Um, so just want to lay out that there is a, they do the straight up process to ask IDAM to reconsider, um, so that's kind of where, where I found and happy to answer any questions.
Before we go any further, could you, just in case, could you read the ordinance that might be under consideration? We need that probably read into the I'm sorry, hang, hang on here. Could you please read?
I'm, I'm gonna move to consider the ordinance as read, it is extremely lengthy.
Angie, do we need it read, uh, have it read in the record?
It doesn't have to be read in ti- in its entirety, which I think Sean hit the, all the points that were in it from what I glanced at this morning.
Okay, well, yeah, I do, I just didn't know legally, we had to have that into the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'll.
And this was, yeah, and this assuming you made advance, this would just be for first reading today, so um, you know, there's certainly the opportunity for it to be available and get media and things like that.
I will just say, I will start off by saying, I would like to proceed with the uh, ordinance, at least on first reading, uh, I think there's interest in second, third reading. Uh, I'd also like to send the letter to Mr. McFadden as president of the board to come in here and tell us why. I don't understand how we spent seven to eight hundred thousand dollars on nothing show for it that I can see. Uh, the, the spending has gotta stop now, not next week, not the week after, it's gotta stop now. Uh, it, it's unfeasible at this point, time to think it's gonna happen, to wrap more money up in this is just to me ludicrous.
Yeah.
So, having said that, any, you got any comments?
I agree with you, uh, first of all, I wanna thank you Sean, this is a, a excellent bit of research and the ordinance was very well written. I think the letter is on point as well, um, I share your concern Stan, that every single week that board is spending fifteen thousand dollars, and so by the next time we meet, they'll have spent another thirty thousand dollars.
Well, and, and like I say, it, it just keeps going up and up and up and, and the likelihood this is being believed make happen is getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
So to keep spending money till we know where we're at, it's just to me, that makes no sense.
Now Sean, um, this ordinance would go into effect immediately, once we've passed it on third reading, correct?
Yes.
So we could, so we could um, pass it on third reading at one point in the meeting and then later in the meeting, make the act to uh, replace a member in that same meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the number of the ordinance, Sean?
Uh, sixteen, twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
Evan, you got any comments?
All right, so here's my concern here, in the times, time it takes us to do second and third reading, they could easily already be in the million, over the million dollar mark spending the way they've been spending. And it might actually expedite some of that.
Possibility.
Have you got any type of response back right now, Sean, from Mr. McFadden?
I haven't made any outreach to him, I just, after your last meeting and discussion at it, that uh, um, you wanted me to investigate this, I would say late, sometime later that week, I had outreach to me, uh, by email from Chris Nissbaum, who's one of the attorneys for the sewer district. Um, he asked if uh, we could schedule a call just to talk, and so I had, it was a week ago Friday, um, uh, a call with Chris Nissbaum and his partner, Andrew Boxberger. And they just basically said that, you know, seen the news about that you guys were looking into the district and uh, I think maybe we viewed the, the video of the, of your last meeting and then just basically gave a little bit of history of the board and uh, wanted uh, me to know that if I had any questions, that they were available uh, you know, to answer anything about the sewer district, so, but beyond that, that's the only contact I've had with anybody associated with the board.
All right, and then my next question is, as far as you know, from what you researched, is there anything statutorily that means it's responsible spending the money when these boards are created? That, that
Well, absolutely, but I don't think, um, I, I mean, I know that many members of, of the project area and the commissioners yourselves have some concerns about this and whether it is responsible. Uh, from a legal perspective, there's nothing that's wrong about this, or that has been done that is inappropriate, it's just a question of policy and priorities, and this board is, is their policy preferences have thought this is a good project and they've been trying to advance it, so, um, I think every, I don't know specifically, but you know, with regard to sewer districts, there are any you know, express statutory provisions that talk about responsible spending, but that's just a background principle of our government and uh, that uh, you certainly need to be responsible, but I think there's, um, at least in my view, nothing that's been irresponsible from a legal perspective about what's been done so far.
Well, that's, that's why we have both legal and political processes, is that it's appropriate for us to exercise a political power in this, in this area where the law may not have the authority to step in.
And just to clarify, if we do first reading today, we'll be able to do second, third reading in the next meeting if we so cho- chose to do that. So, it's not gonna go on forever.
No, that's pending public interest, I'm also looking, it, it takes a lot to get this many people in a room at nine, nine o'clock in the morning. Especially if they still have jobs and stuff like that, I wa- kinda don't wanna waste their time.
Well, I would, I would say, I think Sean's argument is very clear, I think this, this ordinance doesn't really change anything. It just clarifies our power and it also clarifies the power of the council and of the mayor of Plymouth in order to uh, to make sure they're aware that they can replace their members at will as well. Um, and so I don't think there's anything controversial in this uh, in this ordinance and it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna replace somebody, it just clarifies our power to do it. So.
If we remove this individual today, would that inhibit them from spending any more money until our next meeting? No?
I mean, no, but it's still a viable board that has a, a majority of, of the board members there that could take
Although it does probably move the process up one month.
Because if we, if, if we replace him next meeting, um, I think they're gonna have a meeting here in between now and our next meeting, so. I, I just wanna make sure we get this right.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not, yeah, I said, we've got, we've got two questions.
We've got two questions here, the, the first question is on the ordinance, um, clarifying our power on this, the second question would be do we, or do we not remove a member or multiple members of this board? Um, so, I'm, I'd like to resolve the first question.
All right.
Um, and uh, because of the massive public outreach that we've had and because I think this ordinance is not controversial, um, I'm gonna move that we uh, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen as presented.
I will second that, um, and that we consider that second question after we've resolved this question.
Okay, moving forward, uh, there's been a motion in the second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five day sixteen on first reading?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm moving for, to adopt it on all three readings.
Well, you have to do first reading first, I believe, correction?
I, I, I move that we suspend the rules and uh, yeah, I move that we suspend the rules and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen on all three readings.
I, I, I think it's, I think that could give us some trouble.
We, we, I've, I've seen that done.
You're, you're better off doing first reading and then suspend rules, do second, third reading.
Okay.
That way it's more clear.
And we, we gotta give opposing viewpoints at least the opportunity to come in and voice their opinion on that. As much as I like to go ahead and fast track this, there is due diligence and procedure matters.
I would agree for that.
All right, I will, I'll withdraw my motion then.
So, do I have a motion to adopt it on first read?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five day sixteen on first reading, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, your second question?
My second motion is to uh, authorize Mr. Cerisi to uh, communicate our uh, concern to Mr. McFadden via the uh, letter that he uh, emailed to us.
I'll second that.
Not just asking him to come and offer him the opportunity to come and defend his position?
Yep.
Yeah. Second that.
I second that.
Okay, motion been made second to authorize uh, attorney Cerisi to go ahead and contact uh, the president of sewer board to invite him to come and, and uh, address the commissioners, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So if that, I know if uh, the other results, if, if they put the letter, if that's something that you can print off and, and get signatures on?
I have a hard copy here.
Okay, that'd be great, and if you could just send it and email that to me, I will distribute it, I, I appreciate that, and um, with that, uh, uh, I've talked to the commissioners, um, my office for a long time has handled special litigation matters for the Stark County Commissioners and there's a court date that I wasn't able to get out of, uh, coming up this morning in Stark County that I need to go uh, do that on behalf of the commissioners, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna exit, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean, thank you. So, we're gonna skip around a little bit here, uh, things that we've taken care of them, uh, let's go ahead and, let's go and take care of that, commission, I'll turn off all the comments at the end, okay? So you all know, so the next item we have is the Kinkakee River Basin Technical Advisory Committee Appointment. Angie, I believe now Randy Glingel's at appointment, correct?
Uh, Craig Colteis and Randy Glingel.
And Randy Glingel, Randy is a voting member for the, for the county. So, um, I believe Craig is the surveyor, that's why he's appointed, so.
Craig is our appointment to the TR.
He's the technical guy, Randy's a voting member, if I remember correctly.
And the Technical Advisory Committee is the Advisory Committee of the Kinkakee River Basin?
Yeah, correct.
So, that'd be a motion to approve Craig Colteis and Randy Glingel for the Kinkakee River Basin and Technical Advisory Committee.
Yes, for a term of four years.
For a term of four years, all right.
Second.
Motion made second, to retain Craig Colteis and Randy Glingel under present positions of the Technical Advisory Committee of the Kinkakee River Basin, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is the Health Department, we have the, so everybody knows, we have the building, or excuse me, the moving dates and the Health Department will be closed from next Monday, the ninth to the thirteenth that week, uh, moving to the uh, the Bond Building, and I believe we need a motion to authorize uh, the closing of the Health Department for that week. So moved.
And second.
Motion made second to authorize the closing of the Health Department for their move from the ninth to the thirteenth of June, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Like I said, I think they got everything about set up, it's just a matter of getting it and getting it done, so. Uh, the other, last item we have is the, did you have anything else on that, Angie, or no, moving?
No.
Okay, you talked, we talked about that, I'll make sure I didn't miss anything. Twenty twenty-six budget recommendations, I think what we have to do, we have to make a recommendation on uh, on salaries, raises for next year, whatever that would be, and it's not binding, it's just a recommendation to the council. Council will have a final decision, so anybody got any thoughts?
So, looking at that past history about what's actually been followed through with, um, if I remember correctly, there were uh, substantial raises given in twenty twenty-two um, to the tune of roughly one point five million dollars. Um, in twenty twenty-three, I believe it was three percent, and in twenty twenty-four, I believe it was three percent.
Well, it's round three, there was a flat, a flat rate, wasn't it?
It's a flat rate, around three percent.
Did we do a percentage in twenty-three and then the flat rate in, in uh?
And the, the flat rate is this year, the percentage was last year.
Okay, so then, since there was a percentage done last year, and what the council has been doing is trying to alternate those so that we don't
so that we don't get um unusual long-term trends in in separating. You still want some level of differentiation between levels, but you don't want it to, you know, go out of control because of the exponential compounding factor. So um I'd just like to recommend to the council that they continue with their previous practice and do the uh the three percent again this year.
I mean, the option's gonna be up at the end of the day.
Yeah.
It is just recommendation. You comfortable with that?
I'm, I'm fine. As long, as long as what they recommend for us doesn't exceed any of the other raises that they give out, I'll be all right with that.
This isn't for us, this is for everybody.
Oh, this is for everybody. Okay, I misunderstood, I misunderstood.
Commissioners are statutorily required to recommend to the council what your thoughts are. They don't have to adhere to that. They can do as they wish, but you are statutorily required to recommend.
I I'm okay with a three pers- three percent max.
Mm-hmm. That's true, I know what they've done.
Yeah.
And the one year you talked about all the increases, now that was in a couple categories, it was across the board.
Yeah.
They tried to even things out to, we were losing sheriff's deputies, C D L drivers, and they tried to uh with the help of uh list, they tried to even that up, keep us competitive, so. Is that a motion, three percent?
So moved.
That's second.
That's second.
Motion made second to make a recommendation of three percent for raises for the county uh employees for next year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is that everything? Okay, we'll go back up to public comments. Anyone here now has any public comments over anything they wanna address? Just keep, raise your hand. Keep in mind it's three minutes. Uh about anything on your mind, whether it's on the agenda today or not.
And just, just keep in mind if, oh, there we go.
Yes. Come on up here, ma'am. Come on over here, please, will you? Come up there and have a seat, microphone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Please, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rhonda Sukic, seventeen oh seven five Tomahawk Trail, Twin Lakes. Uh my question is in regard to what you were talking about uh about the board. And it seems as their free access and reign to public, and actually my finances. Uh I recently was the personal representative from my mother's estate and I was bound by a fiduciary responsibility to lawfully, legally and actually execute what I did with those funds. And I want to know what is binding the sewer board by any comparable obligation?
Yeah, so obviously I'm not a lawyer and the, the attorney's not here anymore. Um but I, I think basically what, what the law holds governmental units to here in the state of Indiana is basically just to make sure that people aren't embezzling money. Is there, that if, if you make a wildly irresponsible expenditure, that may, you may get political accountability for that, but it's not a violation of law. And so that's, that's why we're not attempting a legal solution, we're attempting a political solution.
Okay, comparatively, using myself as the example, I was responsible for no, for less than fifty thousand dollars. And we're talking nearly a million or multimillion dollar operations, which funding is coming out of the citizens and property owners. And I believe and feel that there should be some clear-cut, well-designed uh framework for the board's responsibility to be active and proper fiduciaries for our interests.
Yeah. Hey, well, I have to tell you, ma'am, that's kind of what we're doing right here now.
Okay, I'm just getting a little ahead of the game? Am I getting just a little ahead of?
We're a little late in the game. The problem of it is when you have appointed boards, a lot of times you don't have, once that board's formed, if they kind of get sideways or go off in left field, you don't necessarily have the, the authority to do anything right away. They uh, it's a process, I guess I will say.
But you are looking into it.
Well, we showed you today. I'm not gonna comment anything past that, but yes.
Okay.
And I think the, the, the um, the way that you um change the direction of a board like this is to make sure that more folks who think the way that you do are represented on that board as opposed to only folks who want to move forward with the project. And so um si- seeing as we replaced one member a few weeks ago, and I think there's a good likelihood that we would replace a second member. Um you know, there's, there's nothing that stops that trend from continuing if the course is not reversed, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So, real, real quick here, um now that I wish Sean was still here, because now I have another question that popped up in my mind. Uh since it's not explicitly expressed in the wording of how that board, sewer board got set up, can we pass an urgent ordinance that requires that board to come back to the council for budget approval stuff? Kind of like the Culver Conserv- or Conservatory did when they set that up?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
The, the interesting part, and this again is why I opposed the creation of a plumed board and said it should have been an elected board, um is because I Dem, by approving the application, is basically giving the board the authority to tax the people within its jurisdiction.
As you can tell, I'm not. Anything else?
Nothing. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? I was waiting for you. Come on up, Mr. Woodburn.
I didn't want to be the first to.
Well, I'm surprised you weren't, but go ahead.
All I got to say is
Three minutes to.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Woodward, one two zero nine four Peach Road. All I got to say is, they continue to spend, so if there's anything you can do to stop the spending now, and you already discussed that, you know, but if we could just stop the spending so it doesn't get out of hand and figure out how we're gonna, keep them, pay it back and how.
Yeah.
Um and I want to thank you all for your time and consideration of, of all the residents involved. As you can see, there's a room full of people now, and it is a big concern to us. Um and we do appreciate your time and, and consideration. Um and I will do anything that you need from me. Yeah, if you, you know, whether it be a presentation from AK Industries or whatever you want, it's just, excuse me, just I'm on board with it, whatever you need from me um to resolve this issue. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Sheila Gardner, one zero six six zero.
They can't hear you. Stay, stay in the microphone.
Sheila Gardner, one zero six six zero, Nutmeg Road, Plymouth. And I just have two questions. Number one, this sewer district was only for that area, am I correct? So every area that you have on the map would have another sewer district?
No, this, this single board was given countywide authority.
So it's gonna go for all of us?
That was the intention.
Except for Tyner, who was able to get blocked out.
Right.
Is there any process for the rest of our areas to get blocked out? Because we tried, but my area is so big. And we're not as close-knit as Tyner is. So they were able to get together pretty quick and get their petition and get out. Is there ever gonna be another chance before you get to our area where we can get blocked out?
I think, I think that process is, as Mr. Cerisi uh laid out, would be the petition to I Dem to dissolve the district.
Is that a yes or no?
I think that is a yes.
Okay.
Um it's, and 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 that would be the process is to, you know, it's either to put people on the board who share those concerns, because they would have to choose to expand their project area in order to bring you guys into there. So it would be placing people on the board who shared that thought or that petition to I Dem to dissolve the district, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause my preference would have been for the board to be dissolved. And that's only because in the very first meeting, when that guy gave the demonstration, so much of his information was incorrect. But unless you knew it and were in the field, you couldn't do it.
Right.
So that's why I want to make sure that my area gets out. Thank you for your time, and I do thank you for addressing the issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I see a hand, there you go, ma'am. Come on up. I see a hand there somewhere, come on up.
Hello, my name is Serena Anderson. I live on uh one seven zero eight five Tomahawk Trail. Um I just wanted to come up and make a quick statement as someone who represents a different demographic because unfortunately I'm decades away from retirement. But I, uh I'm able-bodied where I work, my husband works, we're dual income, we're first-time home buyers. We bought our first home in twenty twenty one, which was no easy feat if anybody has uh looked at the market during that time. And I just wanted to say that this, looking at this and as someone who plans on living in our home for seventy-plus years, and we concede kind of the long term of what a septic tank would be and what city sewage would be, um I just wanted to make it known that we are against the city sewage petition and project that is going to happen. And um as someone with a dual-income household, we are now looking to potentially get a second job or a third job just to be able to afford this on top of trying to expand our family and whatnot. And so I really, um I do appreciate the concerns that have been very clearly stated by this board. And um I just hope you know that there are others out there that also disagree with this um that are in my demographic as well.
When you say disagree, you mean are against the sewer?
Yes, I'm, I'm against it, yes, absolutely.
I, I do have a quick question for you, ma'am. When you and your husband bought your home, was it ever disclosed to you guys that there is a potential of a sewer district coming through?
No, there was not, which we even reached out to our realtor not too long ago um asking about the legality of that. And unfortunately, he just said there, there wasn't any legality that didn't have to be disclosed. Um and it was all based on her, if she wanted to say it or not. We had a septic inspection and she even pumped the septic tank for us before we moved in, but she never once made any comments. But she also didn't disclose a couple other things that we soon found out that we had some problems.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Ma'am, I'd just like to address you, because I, I, on behalf of the commissioner board, met with uh Mr. Woodward and AK Industries.
Yes.
Because, keep in mind, even if this goes away, you still gotta have operable septic's out there, okay?
Oh, yes.
With other solutions, so uh I want more, just to say this goes away, I'll make sure people have options, okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Uh but yeah.
Yes, um Bill made a wonderful presentation with information, and that's kind of what we went um for, knowing that there's other options. And it was kind of um frustrating that the public had to find these other options and come up with these options. And the public had to show the neighbors what other options were available when definitely the sewer board, that could have been their position, that could have been their job, so.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak? Anyone?
Yeah.
We got one of those, got a hand up here. Okay, come on up, ma'am.
My name is Arlene Chabanel, one two three four four Chipper, Detroit, Culver. Uh we're on the Culver side of Lake Otter.
Okay.
Um I really thank you for your due diligence with looking into this. I really appreciate that. You're thinking that maybe there's a way to get out of this. Cause I'm certainly not for forcing everybody to go through sewers or the expense. And my concern right now is the timing. My understanding is you meet only once a month?
Twice a month, ma'am.
Twice a month?
We're meeting again in two weeks.
Okay, so we'll barely have time to get these three readings before they are saying that they're all set with the project in July.
Well, we, we can't take it on second and third reading at our next meeting, and I intend to make that my motion, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, because I was just worried about the timing of all of this.
Is the project supposed to go to I Dem in July?
That's what they were saying that they were.
I had not heard that.
They're gonna be ready with everything and we have to make up our mind by July.
To send it out to bid, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Gentleman here, come on up, sir.
Hi, I'm Chris Nussbaum. I'm attorney for the Marshall County Regional Sewer District. Uh my address is three oh one West Jefferson, Fort Wayne, Indiana, uh four six eight oh two. Um I look forward to reviewing the letter um that I hear uh will be coming to Mr. McFadden um and the ordinance and its current draft. Um I did want to give you um some case law, and I can leave that for Mr. Cerisi, and I can also um send that to him. Um but I think there's a misunderstanding um with regard to the manner in which the sewer district was formed. Um there are stated term limits for each of the uh board members. They do not serve at the pleasure of the appointing committees. They are appointed for a stated term. Um and as such, they cannot be removed during their stated term. Um so, look forward to reviewing the ordinance, um but wanted to make sure that you had this settled case law um so that Sean could consider it. Um and we'll look forward to uh to speaking with you once we have that information. Thank you.
Contact Sean and would you please give that, Sean, or if you have a copy, give it to Angie. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? See, you have anything else?
Since uh, since the attorney for the uh um board is here, um I obviously will disagree uh with your legal position. Um and I would hope that you would advise your board members that they are accountable to the people. They are accountable through this board. And it would be wise for them, if they want to remain on that board, to start listing the public input.
Anything else? You got anything?
I'm, I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut right now. It's better, better that way.
Attorney, motion, would you?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, June, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming.